Good evening, everybody. We'll begin our meeting. We'll consider it begun. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, it's unanimous. Public comment. I was thinking, hockey parents, thank you for coming again. As I was reflecting back the previous week, you owe me like fifteen minutes. Okay, somehow we'll work that out. I was just read this, five minutes.
Maybe that's why we're not going to get out of this.
That's a thought. Recognitions were intended.
Just a couple of quick ones. One of the things I had mentioned at our last school committee meeting is that there was a art reach display at the Provincetown Art Association. And I went up to the art reach exhibit and was looking at some of our, we had a number of our Montmoi students there. And I mean, it was just, some of that work was just fantastic that our students were producing. I thought the one, for me, that stood out was one of our students, Kat Van Buren, had this graphic novel that she had created and displayed that was better than most graphic novels that you could walk into a bookstore and find. It was just amazing that the work that's being done and just how students here are taking advantage. And a couple of our students were talking about how it wouldn't have been possible had they not been able to get on a van that's going up Route 6, up Route 6 from here twice a week, and how that experience has been transformative in terms of where they want to go next. So, yeah, thank you to the folks in Provincetown for making that possible. Also, I had sent to the school committee just a little movie before vacation of a number of our students took part in the tenth Chinese Bridge, Chinese Speech Contest at UMass Boston. And it was great to see Montmoi students on film, competing and sharing their ability to speak Mandarin. We also had a great success. Our wellness teachers put on a wellness fair right before vacation in the auditorium that had, had some students were doing presentations, but a large number of different community groups, be it chiropractors or nutritionists in the community and different organizations within our community that really emphasized the lifelong aspect of wellness, that it's all parts of well-being that we're trying to get at with our curriculum. And I know how much time and effort that our wellness teachers here at high school put into having that happen. You know, we also had, on a similar wellness type of approach, Kate Brewster, who is our HR person, had a wellness fair this week for our staff, you know, to, again, I think, what's that?
The benefits fair.
Yeah, benefits fair for our staff. That again, it's, a lot of the emphasis is also on, what sort of things can you do to be healthy, to keep people healthy, so that, again, it keeps insurance costs and everything else down. And then last, there were also just a number of kind of fun, interactive assemblies that I had a chance to kind of pop in on over at the middle school. One had students in the auditorium Skyping essentially with an oceanographer in the Gulf of Mexico. At times, technology was a little flaky in terms of being able to keep the connection, but it was great to have this person really share what they're doing and that ability for the students to interact. And then there was another science stem related to presentation that the students went to at the middle school in the week before vacation. So, you know, lots of fun things happening on a lot of fronts. That's it for me.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions for Scott? I'd like to just draw your attention and go back to our approval of the minutes. In your folder this evening, there are executive session minutes that I'd like to have you review and will vote on them. It's your pleasure. There are two pages that summarize several of our executive sessions, actually two. Sharon.
I have a question about votes, not particularly the executive session, but when we vote for something that's not unanimous, I might be incorrect, but it seemed like we would say who voted what, yea and nay, no, never did, okay. So it just goes in there, how many vote each way?
The only exception would be with regard to a vote call vote.
Okay.
Move to approve the minutes of the executive session of October 22nd, 2014.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comments on that executive session date? All those in favor of approval?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, it's unanimous. And September 10th, 2014.
Move to approve the minutes of September 10th, executive session minutes? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Student representative report this evening. Lane, good evening.
So I guess I will just go through a few highlights. I can never get them all, but some things that have been going on lately. So first, I'll start off with the senior things from our senior representative. So the seniors are getting ready to leave. They all have basically decided because deposits are due on Friday, so they'll be wearing their t-shirts with where they're going to college. It's very exciting. On May 29th, they're taking a bus to Boston Harbor for their last hurrah, the senior crews around the harbor. And graduation is on June 7th at the community center. Senior Arts Night is coming up as well. The student council is planning a Spring Spirit Week, once again, the final hurrah for the seniors, as well as a dance on their last day of school, which is May 22nd. And then they have finals after that, the next week, unless, they could be exempt if they got an A in the class for the term, or the year, I believe, I'm sorry. Also, we are having a pep rally in the spring, and we're going to be doing a fundraiser to raise money for the victims of Nepal this past week. What else? Okay, and for the junior class, we had a very successful prom on April 17th, the Friday of vacation. We had it at Wacoasit, and three years of hard work in the making, and it was a really great night. And for my class, we just want to thank our class advisors, Ms. Wheaton, the librarian, Mr. Moynah and Ms. Byron, as well as Mr. Burkett and Mr. Alamo, and the police officers. They all chaperoned, they were there that night. But especially to our class advisors, too, they worked side by side for us for three years to make it happen, and we raised over $10,000 to have prom, so it was wonderful. And then we had after-prom at Willie's Gym in Eastham, where we were really happy at 3:00 AM. But it was great. There's a pool, a turf field, we had a hypnotist, a psychic, so we had lots of fun. And as a thank you to the parents as well that made that happen, they, it was an outside of school thing, so they raised, I believe, $15,000 for us to have a safe after-prom, so that was great. Also, over vacation, a few school-related things happened. Firstly, the Interact Club planted the garden at the food pantry, and several of us went to support Mr. Houston and his 20th consecutive Boston Marathon. So it was really nice to see him there and cheer him on. And actually, the announcer said, Rich Houston, Harwich, Mass., so that was pretty cool. Next week, we have AP tests. Today, at school during our enrichment block, we had a woman, Sarah Hootin, I believe her name is, she, over the past four and a half years, she's in the middle, she's from London. She has traveled across the world by bicycle, boat, like rowing, and so she gave a speech, and it was wonderful. Mr. Dixon organized that. And this week is Peace Week at school. Before vacation, we had a Holocaust memorial and concert at Nauset that a lot of our students participated in. Also, the Latin students went to Walden Pond to live deliberately with Henry David Thoreau. Finally, oh, Ms., our own Mrs. McGory, she's a middle school math teacher, eighth grade, I should say, sorry, not middle school, one Citizen of the Year in Harwich for her work in preventing drug addiction. I was, and, oh, and then finally, we have a film production class at school, and several of our students have been working at C-3 TV in all the monitors in the hallway. We finally, they're up and running, and they're broadcasting now, so that's all I have.
Boy, a lot, lots going on.
Lots of stuff going on.
Great job.
Thank you so much.
Great job.
Thank you.
How things change. You know, recalling my high school years, I never was exempt from an exam, and I didn't get a college t-shirt.
Harbor cruise, did you go on a harbor cruise?
No, I don't, I don't think we had a harbor cruise either. Terrific, that's great. I eventually got a college t-shirt. From our middle school, we have two student reps. Join us, Ross Martin and Katie Sandborn. How are you kids? Pretty good, Mr. Russell? Don't be nervous, let me be nervous for you.
I'm Ross Martin, I'm a seventh grader at Montmoi Middle School.
I'm Katie Sandborn, I'm a fifth grader at Montmoi Middle School. So in grade five, Mr. Quinn's class, which is my class, had a great time in Toronto learning about animals and nature. The weather was great, and we got to play outside a lot. In science, we have been studying energy, like mechanical energy, which is energy in motion, and simple machines, how that ties into that. And I'm doing the report for grade six as well. In geography, we, they have been, started, have started researching a specific country, things like culture, climate, economy, and geography. They're going to take the information and learn several projects they will display at their international fair on May 19th. They would like to invite you all to attend the middle school cafeteria anytime from 5:00 to 6:30 on May 19th. They also attended the whaling museum in New Bedford. Whaling ships traveled great distances from New Bedford to Africa, around the tip of South America and to New Zealand, where captains, wives, and children would be left for education, to Hawaii, and then to Alaska, and then back home again. It was super dangerous work, and they would be gone for three or more years. They had a whaling ship model they got to go on. When we were paint, when they were painting the name on the ship, someone spelled it incorrectly, but they kept it because they thought it was bad luck to change the name. Everyone was surprised by the whale bones that are old, 50 years or more, and still dripping oil.
The seventh grade got to go to DC over April vacation. Everyone had a lot of fun, and they all loved it. They learned a lot there. And at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, they got to lay a wreath there. And we also had a dance seminar, where we learned how to ballroom dance with a British Dancing With the Stars person. Reviews were mixed about it. I thought it was funny, so. And all the grades got to, they had an assembly with the sea jazz, and most people liked it. And park testing is coming up again next week, so things are pretty quiet. We have a subcommittee working with Mr. Daniels to plan our end-of-the-year semi-formal dance and discuss some other celebrations as an ice cream social, and there's more information to come. We're also planning a spirit week for June. We'll have days like Montmoi Day, where everyone wears Montmoi gear, color competition, and Freaky Friday, which is just crazy hair and hat day. And we purchased some new things for the school store, some things were stress balls, mechanical pencils, shark stickers, and tattoos, and a big hit were the bendable figures. Students have been working at the store during lunch on Thursdays, and fifth graders are still the biggest vendors.
Some student members have volunteered to help out with the open house tomorrow. Students will be around the school to guide and welcome fourth graders and their families from 6:15 to 7:00.
Thank you.
Good job, Katie. Good job, Ross. Lane, SPO, you also, that applause, right? Thank you for those reports. Our subcommittee reports, a policy subcommittee process of adding and removing athletic teams.
So in the packet, you have a draft that, of a policy for adding, adding and subtracting athletic teams in the district, but also for adding or subtracting co-op athletic teams in the district. We don't have as an action item, with a policy, we would go and present, discuss, come back to it, come back to, at the next meeting and discuss to vote on adopting the policy. There is, there isn't one action item that I would say that I'd like the committee to consider relative to this, and that's that we, in terms of time sake, after we've finished discussing this policy, to then think about girls hockey in context of this policy. So what the, you know, what the, what, the way the policy is sort of talks, or talks about a sport is to, to look at, if you're going to add it, you know, what's the student interests and the potential for growth in that sport? Is there association recognition? Is this a sport that's an MIAA sport? Is there organized, or scholastic competition related to that? Are there facilities that exist for the sport? Are there competent coaches that we could have for this? How's it going to be funded? Can that sport get scheduled? And, you know, thinking of equity issues in terms of equivalent opportunities for boys and, for boys and girls. And so, you know, so there's, and then, you know, going all the way down to things like health risk, and I know that Tom, Jody, and Joe brought up concerns about girls playing ice hockey on the boys' team. So the, I guess the intent of this policy is that if you're, if we were in the future were adding sports teams, that ideally you'd have, you know, a group of individuals interested in adding the team, working with the athletics director and the principal and administration to, to come up with a proposal that ultimately comes before the school committee. I'd say in many ways, we had that at our last meeting. And, you know, so if we, we think about the proposal, in essence, and how it would fit into the context, the context of this, the policy that you see is one that's been used in Plymouth Public Schools. We made some modifications to the way Plymouth had adopted it. One of the things that was on the Plymouth, you know, things to consider is, you know, revenues that the sport's created, or creates, and we felt that, you know, that's not, that shouldn't be a factor for us here, so we, you know, there are some aspects of the policy that we, you know, that we changed. One of the other things that we felt important is to add into that, you know, that if, if the school committee votes to adopt that new sport into the Montmoi fold, that while, while there's a phase in financially, that parents are supporting the sport initially, that from the get-go, for the coaches, we're committing to go and fund our share, if it's a co-op or if it's not a co-op, we're committing to hire the coach. You know, the coach is ours, but the parents are working at supporting the other aspects, you know, the equipment, the transportation, things like that for, you know, for that sport. So, you know, so the, the policy talks about a three years, that there's a, there's an ability that, you know, that the parents or families that are bringing forward a proposal for a sport are able to go and fund it for the first three years. And then there's a three-year phase in where the school district is picking up 50%, and 75%, and 100% of the cost of running that, of running that sport. So that's sort of the cliff notes on, you know, on the policy and the proposal here.
So it was Ted and Stephen and I that were here with Scott and this high school principal. And we had two, two policies, one from, what, which were the two?
Well, this, co-op and regular. And they're combined.
They were for two different camps.
Well, one of them, one of them was one that Plymouth had used, and the other's one that Weston had used. And they, they both asked very similar questions in terms of what should you be thinking about when adding a sport or when deleting a sport.
And so, we talked about these things in theory, but never actually saw this paper. For me, I don't know that much about sports, so I'd really like this to be sent through some of the coaches to kind of see how that would be. And just personally, not as, well, as a member of the group, I don't like the idea of charging students for, for sports. I feel like that negates being a public school, and that may be a dissenting view, but I feel like the rest of our school, and we're, it's free, when I went to school, it was free. It's not discriminatory that way. We pay taxes for that. And I also understand the point of this, but I just don't support it.
Could you clarify something when you, when you mentioned that the, the coach would need to be, the coach's salary would need to be paid for by the school? Is that after the three-year period or including that three-year period?
That would include, just from the get-go.
Okay.
And, you know, the way I would look at that, and I think Bill might agree on this one, that, you know, the coaches, it's our staff.
Right.
You know, that, you know, that, you know, as a school district, you should be, you know, funding the staff that you're ultimately evaluating and making the decision on its, that that, that's our commitment, and ultimately, it's our coach as, you know, that the principal and athletic director are evaluating and making personnel decisions on.
The section five on the third page, did the guidelines in section two apply also to five? The, I mean, yeah, okay, because the first one has, section one, or article one, has to do with non-co-op teams, and five has to do with co-op teams. I haven't read the detail, but they appear to be the exact same thing.
Right.
So I guess I need to be, make, make sure that it's clear that the guidelines under two apply to one and five. It's almost, the way it's written, it's almost like two applies to one, and then five is just.
Right, extra on the end.
Yeah.
Move five below one.
Well, you know, it's just something to clarify that.
No, combine. Sorry, I dropped you.
We should eliminate five and change the heading to incorporate.
Co-op as well as.
And in section four, it says guidelines for streamlining or dropping a sport, and it jumps right into 4.1 and 4.2. I'm not sure how that's, I don't, I don't, I don't understand that. How's that a guideline? Is the language after that? I don't know. I don't, I don't understand how four is a guideline. It just seems, it just says drop. I see, it's just an option of dropping and leaving a varsity team or dropping the entire sport. So in other words, it's not really a guideline, it's just, you're saying those are the two options? It's not that clear to me.
The premise behind it is, if you don't have enough students playing a sport, the first thing you eliminate is the JV.
Yeah.
So that everybody plays varsity. And then if you don't have enough for varsity, then it's, it's dropped.
So it's not an option, it's a?
Procedure.
So step one is to eliminate a portion, or one of the teams.
So the theory is you would not do, you would not jump to 4.2, you would start with 4.1?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe that could be clarified a little, in the sense of, you know, it'll be, it will be the policy of the school department to, you know, do 4.1 first, and.
Right.
Just something, wasn't clear to me as to what it meant. I get the idea, the idea makes sense to me.
Any other questions, Kovitz?
We'll be given an opportunity to discuss this at another.
Right. If hearing, then we'll move on this until our next meeting for you to study it, and at that time, we'll either move on it up and down or further clarify it.
Yep. And I'll send, I'll send the committee a revised version of this that incorporates the comments that have come up. Yeah, and I, you know, so what I, what I'd like you to consider is if we, if we look at number five on the back page, and consider the proposal that Mr. McKinnon and Loons brought to us at the previous school committee meeting, I think that Bill and I would argue that, that they, you know, they met these criteria, that, you know, that this, you know, that with regard to girls hockey. And, you know, what I would ask of the committee, if, if, in general, you, you agree with the, sort of the theme that this is, this is going, that, you know, that we, as a district, would take care of our portion of the co-op coach, the parents, you know, would, you know, take care of the others, the other aspects of funding, of funding the sport, which is what their, their proposal was for us. But again, to address the longer-term concerns, if you think of Title IX, that a policy like this protects us, it gives us a deadline at which, at which a sport that we're bringing in, you know, and introducing becomes ours, or gets dropped from, you know, from the, you know, from the district's menu of options if there's not the sustained interest in participation.
Nancy?
Just to clarify, right now with Title IX, we have equal boys and girl opportunities throughout the year. And so this would be adding one on the girl's side. So there would, there's not an equal number for.
I would propose that cheerleading could be a co-ed sport.
I'm not wanting to argue that, I just want to, I'm just saying right now, it's listed, we're at balance. We're following, and this is leaning one over. Or no?
It's, I think Title IX should not necessarily be looked at as, as, is there, is there one here and one there, but if.
I don't really know.
If you're audited, you're audited looking at the whole picture, and I would, I would say, are we, you know, I think different, you know, different folks might disagree. John, you know, John might say, hey, there's not a girls hockey team, you guys are, you know, are out of whack, they're. I think, I think if someone were to audit us currently with our Title IX, they'd say that there's. there's balance, there's not necessarily the same thing in every sport. But I think adding girls hockey isn't going to knock us out of balance.
So it's not literally a number, it's not a team-for-team thing? It's just an overall sense of feelings of opportunities?
It's an overall sense of opportunities.
Mr. Russell, is it appropriate to...
Sorry, I had your next one.
Go ahead.
I was going to make a motion.
Yeah, so I was asking, is it appropriate to make a motion at this time?
So used to having Steve make motions, Mommy. I'm sorry, let's see that motion.
I need a second.
No, I want to spread the motion.
I would like to move the school committee add girls ice hockey co-op at a high school level to Montmoreuil Regional High School.
May I add to that, sort of with the understanding that it will follow the guidelines that we establish within the next month?
Yep.
Do I hear a second for that?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Brian?
I just have a couple more questions. I guess I'll ask, Mr. Carpenter, have the, are you, as part of your report on this recommendation, because that is your recommendation.
Yes.
Are you telling us that they have fulfilled the guidelines in section two? All of the things required in section two have occurred?
I think that the conversations that I've had with Joe and John and Jody are, our understanding is they would, we would be fulfilling them.
Will there be somebody, I have another question.
Go ahead, Brian.
Will there be, will there be a responsible party who is, you know, required to submit something that says they agree to these guidelines? I mean, how will this, I guess we've discussed the fact that the coach is going to be somebody that we pay, and I assume you...
Our portion.
Or that we, our portion because it's a co-op, right? So is it somebody who is already in existence with the other school? It is, okay. Other gentleman who spoke the last, okay.
And I think that it's, you know, a co-op team under this sort of family, a new sport. It ultimately becomes a co-op with parents and the school itself to make sure that this opportunity or this new opportunity can happen. So, and I'll take the parents' word to that I met with that we can make this happen.
I have a follow-up question. I feel he is the more than area. My question is under 2.6, would this imply that we need to reach out, would it be NOSIT? Cape Tech?
NOSIT is the host.
NOSIT. So if after year one, we're going to pick up 50%?
It's after year...
Four.
So it's in year four.
So we have three years of...
We have three years to make that phone call. My question is answered. In other words, at some point, we will, if this takes effect, all two or three schools will do it?
I think it would be, I think it's not that all two or three would do it, it's that we would be doing this for the Montmoreuil students that would be part of that co-op team. So we would work with NOSIT to say, you know, how much is it costing for our girls to be part of this team? And in year four, we would say, you know, we're taking on the coach plus 50% of the additional costs. We'd work with the families to pick up the other 50% of those costs. And the following year, 70, you know, that we'd do 75% and then the whole enchilada.
Just to follow up on that, it wouldn't really matter to us whether NOSIT said, "Thank you." And the parents are going to be picking up, NOSIT ad nauseam.
No, it's our portion. So if there are 20 girls playing and we have five, we're paying for five.
Right.
And they're paying for 15.
Because as...
So it's 50% of five, 75% of the five, and 100% of the five.
Because as the co-op stands now, if I understand the way certain sports are funded, I believe that the NOSIT parents are paying for the sport and that Cape Tech is paying for their girls. So it doesn't mean that all different partners in the co-op are, you know, all different partners are funding their girls, but potentially different ways.
That was my question. In my way of thinking, it would be, at some point, three or four years from now, the school districts would pick up what the parents for X number of years have been doing. But my answer, I'm clear on that. Sharon?
I think that if we're talking about information here, just as a point of sharing or thinking about things, I think that's fine, but I feel very uncomfortable using this that hasn't been passed per se, like have they finished, filled out all of two or something? Because we haven't even approved it yet.
That's why I added with the understanding that they'll follow the guidelines that we approve within the next month.
Oh, right, not this one, it's just the other one.
When this is approved, they're going to follow the guidelines.
And I think we're also trying to be sensitive to the timeline that we have to get a co-op with girls approved.
Any other questions, Co-its? There's been a motion in second on the floor, all those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Satisfied? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous, thank you. Welcome aboard. Go NOS smaller now.
Thank you, and thank you for the extra time last week, last meeting.
You're welcome.
It's overextended our time.
That's okay, yeah. And you'll be Joe from now on, my daughter told me, you called him what?
I laughed with my mother about that same thing, actually, just two nights ago.
Yeah.
Yep, you're wonderfully successful.
Super tennis report. Just first, a reminder to everyone, and that's that we have a town meeting coming upon us, followed by town meeting. So our next two Mondays, we're cordially invited to gather for town meeting, first in Harwich at 7:00 PM at the Harwich Community Center, and a week later, on May 11th, at the Montmoreuil Regional Middle School Gymnasium for the annual town meetings. And at the Harwich Town Meeting, we also have the capital exclusion that, you know, that we need to see past in order to see us really realize that full budget and for us to accomplish the capital projects we had identified in the budget, $250,000 of capital projects that the district needs to undertake in order to, the biggest piece of that is get the middle school building and renovate aspects of it to suit our program that, you know, that we want to run as a middle school program, as opposed to it being left in the state that it was left at as a Chatham-Pay School educational program. But we also have as part of that some technology upgrades in that building to take the Wi-Fi system that's aging and upgrade the Wi-Fi system so that it's ready for the next decade. Also to update the interactive projectors and whiteboards that are in each of the classrooms to support the educational mission that's happening in there. And we also have as part of this to replace some of, or many of the teachers' computers at each of the elementary schools. These are the computers that they use that are connected to their interactive whiteboards. You know, so again, it's just trying to keep us, you know, continuing to keep the technology and the facilities at place so that's supporting the mission we have. There's also, within that $250,000, the, obviously, the fire panel, that's, you know, that's part of this building's brand new, but the fire panels that are in each of our other schools are over 15 years old. And, you know, these are the panels that, you know, if a smoke detector goes off, the signal from that smoke detector is coming to the panel and activating, you know, the, sort of the emergency, you know, response that happens, you know, in terms of the whole building alarm sounding, the, you know, the fire department automatically being contacted. So, you know, so we want to make sure that we get the fire panels replaced and updated in each one of the buildings for safety reasons. And then the last little piece that I included on the list that I put in terms of our warrant information for, you know, for Harwich is the, the Montmoreuil Regional Middle School and Chatham Elementary School have a number of functionally decorative, you know, so their support columns out front that are wood, but they do hold up structure. And many of the facades of these columns are starting to, you know, starting to rot. Most notably, if you walk into Chatham Elementary School, you'll see that the columns, as you're walking in, have really rotted out along the bases, so it's to replace the rotting columns. So there's a series of, there's a series of capital things that the vote, the capital exclusion vote in Harwich would support. And, you know, there's not a similar vote in Chatham. The budget, as we presented to Chatham, funds their share of the capital for this project. So not only would we need support for the capital exclusion at Harwich Town Meeting, but that also goes before the voters. So on May 19th, we need to see support for that to, you know, from the, at the polls to ultimately see it happen for us. Last thing, I sent out an email to parents before vacation and a letter to families just asking them if they could take some time and give us some feedback on how we're doing and what we could do better in each one of the schools. We, I think we've gotten well over, you know, 50 in some cases, almost 100 responses from parents at each of the schools. And we'll be sending out a little reminder with, from each of the principals to, you know, to respond if you haven't. You know, we'll take those responses and report back to their school councils and, you know, each principal will report back to their constituency and have them come and share with you, you know, some of the things that are the high points at each one of the schools, and some of the things that we'll be working on improving as we head into next year.
Brian?
I'm assuming that either Mr. Carpenter or Mr. Russell will be giving this list at town meeting to seek the support of the people at town meeting and people at town meeting to also go to the ballot box and support it. And of course, most of Harwich will have just watched the video of what you just said, I'm sure, on our website. But in addition to that, what are the limitations or what are the options for the school department to get the word out, you know, directly to parents? The union, I'm hoping, will, you know, be notified and be out in full to support us at town meeting and also, you know, at the ballot. But I know that, you know, there's restrictions on political-type things that we can, that the school department can do, and I'm not entirely, I'm not particularly knowledgeable what those restrictions are. But are we able to, you know, use your normal means of communication with parents to ask them to support the budget or at least to attend town meeting and to vote?
I would say, from, you know, from my vantage point, I'll be sending out a follow-up email this, you know, as we head into the weekend, reminding families that we have town meeting coming up, you know, that we need, you know, people there to, you know, to, you know, be part of the democratic process on budgets. It's that delicate line, you can go and say, this is what it is, but from my position, I can't necessarily say this is how you should politically go one direction or the other.
That's a bit like passive-aggressive.
I actually do believe school committee members have a little greater latitude in that from your individual positions.
But we don't have access directly to the parents as the school department does.
If I could comment, the parents who faithfully, let me try that again, I'll choose another word. Everything's coming out of my nose. The parents who faithfully came for a couple of months in support of the original budget, then the reduced budget, have commented to me in the past couple of weeks that they plan to support the budget as well as the exclusion votes on town meeting floor, when they sense as individual mothers and dads the need to get out. On that note also, I would urge, and I'm echoing what Scott said, especially to my Harwich colleagues, but my sense is that being elected for the Montmoreuil Regional School Committee, although you may not vote in Harwich, you certainly can speak and you would gain permission to speak. So I would urge all of us to attend the Harwich vote and be prepared to thank the FIDCOM and the Selectmen for their support and be prepared, and Scott alluded to it, the letter for the parents, we all have copies of that, prepare or comment if you feel strongly about some of these requests under the capital, to seek out a microphone to support it, to introduce yourselves, because we very seldom as a group publicly are introduced to say we are the prime reasons why we're trying to make a quality school and experience with kids. So this is a good opportunity, Monday night. And yes, Brian, I plan to, similar to what you did two years ago, to have a overview statement and thanks as well as what we've accomplished. And then when it comes to individual questions and answers from the floor, we all should be prepared to respond.
I also think it's important to remind people and emphasize that what you, you know, raised your hand or card for at town meeting, if you don't show up at the polls and do the same thing, you, you know, showing up at town meeting potentially is for not. And I think what you, what unfortunately often, you know, often happens in towns and communities is you find overwhelming support for, you know, for something like this capital exclusion at town meeting floor. And many of the, you know, many of the same people don't show up at the polls and the poll vote gets, at times, uncomfortably tight.
Nancy?
What is the other part of the capital exclusion in Harwich? It's not just our 250, it's...
No, I could be wrong, but I think there's seven or eight items.
But it'll be separate.
Oh, there's separate votes?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I did not know that, okay.
So the Harwich, if I recall correctly, is, it's a $184,125,000 capital exclusion. That's Harwich's share of our $250,000 of capital that we had in the Montmoreuil budget.
I have a copy that we sent out to all the mothers and dads that breaks down that 184,000 into categories. So if you don't have a copy of it, we'll try to make one between now and Monday for you.
Actually, the copy you have there that breaks it down by dollar is actually what I sent for the warrant. And then I had a, I had a similar one that went to parents that I just kind of pared it down just a little bit.
To all the parents?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I only got one left.
I didn't catch that.
Do you have two stickers?
Did you get two stickers?
I got two stickers, but one letter.
I got one letter, two stickers.
Yeah, one per, so it was one per household, depending on how many kids. I was just wondering why you picked one versus...
Yeah.
Start low and go up or...
So did it say, like, to the parent of Jacoby or to the parent of Rebecca?
It said to the parents of Jacoby, which made my heart stop.
You'll have to ask the person that was addressing the envelopes.
Thanks, Scott, for that, so great.
Sharon, head on.
Sharon?
Would it be possible for you to send to us a copy of the, whatever went out to parents, because sometimes people stop us. And then it would be real handy to have on my phone the facts instead of trying to imagine them. Yeah, that would be great.
Leads us to the action items, one of which with our vote five minutes ago involved the girls ice hockey... the girls' ice hockey cooperative. The second one, Katie, involves declaring surplus goods.
I just want to give you a little bit, just a little background. One of the things that the athletic director along with the high school principal is really making a, a, a plan to replace uniforms. As you recall, when we became Montomoy, we had to get all brand-new uniforms for all the athletic programs. And we don't want to be in a, it was, it was pretty expensive and we don't want to be in a position that we have to buy all of the uniforms all at once again. So Mr. Burkhead along with Mr. Demand Champ have been putting together, I, I think it's a draft, I'm not sure if it's finalized, but there's some base and things. But the athletic director was able to find this program for specifically the cheerleading uniforms that are used all year, all year-long in the different seasons. And if you trade in the uniform, then it gets credited towards a purchase of, of replacement uniforms. So we'll be declaring these surplus. We won't be offering them for sale to the public, we'll be using that to then replace and provide at a reduced cost of replacement cheerleading uniform.
Thanks, Katie.
Mr. Chairman?
Steven?
First I'd like to say to Katie that the memo that he sent along was very, very helpful. It was, it was great. And I move that we declare as surplus equipment 14 sets of cheerleading uniforms.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of this motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you, it's unanimous. That concludes our agenda for this evening. We also have a need to move into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining units and non-union contracts. So I would ask for a affirmative vote on that.
Someone.
Sorry?
So we need...
Roll call, I'm sorry.
Roll call. Thank you, Nancy. I was giving people chances.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you all. Thank you all for coming.
We're not moving, we're not coming back to...